One.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Cyril Jefferson convening the regular meeting of the High Point City Council. You're with me on the dais. We've got every member of council present, save Mayor Proton Moore. We also have Madam Attorney, Clerk, and Manager with us. Before we get into our agenda, we'll ask that everyone join us for a moment of silence and Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm going to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we get into our meeting, we'll ask if there are any amendments that need to be made to the agenda. If not, then we'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Holmes and seconded by Councilmember Andrew. In discussion on the motion to adopt our agenda, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we have our agenda. The first proclamation and recognition that we'll celebrate on this evening is with regards to Fair Housing Month, and we just had a really exciting update. I got the voice of God right now. Nice. We just had a really exciting update from our team here. And for this proclamation, I want to invite up Race McCray. I'm also going to invite up, I believe I got a new team member, Corinne. Am I saying it correctly? I missed the last name. Corinne, what's your last name? Campbell? Camp, okay. Corinne Camp, welcome. Now, this is her first day, and nothing better than celebrating your first day with a pitcher and staying after five. This is what you call dedication. So, we appreciate the work that y'all do, and we're going to read this in honor of the team. Whereas, April marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, also known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, we sought to eliminate discrimination in housing opportunities and to affirmatively further fair housing choices for every person residing in America. And whereas, the State of North Carolina's Fair Housing Act was passed in 1983, further enforced the fundamental right of fair housing opportunities for North Carolina residents. And whereas, the City of High Point supports and encourages fair housing for all residents, and has taken steps to become a substantially equivalent fair housing assistance program, including the adoption in 2024 of a local fair housing ordinance. And whereas, illegal barriers to equal opportunity, no matter how subtle, diminish the rights of all. And whereas, ongoing education and outreach are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, and responsibilities. And whereas, Fair Housing Month is time set aside each year to remind all residents that we have not only the right to own and rent property, but also an individual responsibility to guard this right from any infringement. And whereas, equal opportunity in housing is a condition of life that can and should be achieved in High Point. Now therefore, be it resolved, the aye Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in High Point and commend its observance to all of our citizens. Can we please celebrate this awesome occasion? Thank you. You even get a proclamation on your first day. Man, tell you what, man. It's hard to keep this momentum, Race. You're going to have to make sure day number two is just as exciting. Our next honor is for National Community Development Week, and I'm really excited because I see Nina Wilson, our Housing and Community Development Director, and somehow someone was in your closet because they're wearing the same thing as you. Can you come on up and tell me who you've got with you? Is it just the entire Community Development Department, Community Development Housing Department?
Well, you probably have our staff members, not all of them, and we also have some of our state officials here, and Oropin, who's our chairperson, and he'll fix up the proclamation.
Okay, y'all don't all want to come up for the picture?
Yeah, we definitely do. We want to come up for the picture.
Come on up. Yeah, come on up. Why not? How are y'all? Good to see y'all. Appreciate y'all being here. Man, y'all got banners and everything, man. Sheesh. Jaron, I'm not trying to say anything, but they got banners, man. I don't know. I guess you didn't get up early enough, I guess. And let's slide y'all down, because I know as we're meeting, we're going to be taking pictures, and we want to be centered up. Yep, right there. That's perfect. Perfect. Can we balance some of the men out? Can I ask two men to go on that side? Would that be okay? Yep, there you go. There you go. I don't know a lot, but I know a little bit. Can we get one woman, another woman on this side? Can we do that? That'd be okay. I'm trying, y'all. I'm trying. Well, there you go. There you go. Now, I wish I had a T-shirt. If I didn't know you was doing that, I would have had one. Okay, all right, all right, enough. Don't, don't. Yes, yes, I would love a T-shirt. You can ask my size right now in front of all these people? I mean, I know we're inclusive, but, no, we'll talk about it later. We'll talk about it later. My hair doesn't lay down. Okay. Whereas, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, National Association of Counties, National Community Development Association, National Association for County Community and Economic Development, National Association of Local Housing Finance Agencies, National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, and the Council of State Community Development Agencies have formed a partnership to promote the 2025 National Community Development Week campaign, April 21st through 2025. Whereas, this year marks the 39th anniversary of the National Community Development Week campaign. This annual campaign is designed to focus local as well as national attention on the numerous outstanding accomplishments over the past 51 years of the Community Development Block Grant and over the past 35 years of the Home Investment Partnerships Program. And whereas, the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to promote decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas, the Home Program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, affordable housing opportunities for low-income people. Nationally, over 1 million units of affordable housing have been completed using home funds. And whereas, the Congress of the United States has declared April 21st through 25th, 2025 as National Community Development Week, and have called upon the President and all people of the United States to observe the week with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of High Point, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 21st to 25th, 2025 as National Community Development Week in the City of High Point and call upon all of our citizens within the city to participate in ceremonies and activities celebrating the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs. Can we please celebrate the great work of community development? Now, I got to put this somewhere in the center. So, is there anyone who wants to? Sure, sure, sure. I'll join you all in the center. Okay. Then, here. Whatever. Hold that. All right. Nice. Nice. Thank you. Okay. Now, do you have anyone who wants to speak for the? Do you want to speak? Y'all got Operation Awareness Month coming up this Saturday, right? Don't I normally do it before Saturday?
Thank you, Mayor Jefferson. Members of City Council, great to see you guys. Madam City Manager, always a pleasure. Our High Point folks here, of course, we are the city of all-American city, so I'm grateful to be here to represent the Citizens Advisory Council, enacted by the Congress in 1974 under the Housing and Community Development Act, which was signed into law by President Ford back on August 22nd, 1974. The Community Development Block Grant, which we affectionately call CDBG, this program officially turned 50 last year, August 22nd, 2024. This program provides local communities with flexibility to design and implement strategies tailored to meet local needs and priorities. So, for us, the City of High Point, this particular entitlement, the CDBG Committee, has been inception since its inception of this program, which was 1975. And I will tell you what, back in 1975 until now, we have received $55,510,110. What this program does, it assists low and moderate-income households in our communities to address infrastructure, economic development, housing, disaster recovery, and also other community needs. We also have another program that you've heard called the Home Program. This program was authorized in 1990 under the Cranston Gonzalez Affordable Housing Act. This Home Program is the largest federal block grant in the state and local governments, and is designed as well to create affordable housing for low-income households. High Point became a participating jurisdiction in 2005, and we have received over $9 million, 24,031, which has been invested in single and multifamily housing. So, as you can see, the need for CDBG, as well as the home funds, are as critical today as they were when these programs were created, to continue to serve those most in need. Now, I will say, although every year, this program has decreased, so less, 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 we've had less lemons, we have used it to the best here so that when people receive these funds, it is not watered down, but it's put to good use. So, Council, just want to say one more thing. Y'all should have some water bottles, and I want to thank you and each one of y'all for the work that you do here as well, and also for the City of High Point for entrusting us in the work here. Thank you.
Banners, T-shirts, and water bottles. This feels spoiled. You know, Ms. Corinne, they don't do this normally. It must be because it's your first day. It must be. I'm excited about the work of community development. My introduction to government here in High Point, as well as Michael and Tim, if I'm not mistaken, we all served on the Citizens' Advisory Council, and we got to see the work firsthand before we were ever elected, and it's powerful work. We were on Capitol Hill just last month, and one of the things we advocated for, talking to our senators and Congress reps, is that the HUD funding is still critical to continue to address issues that we are facing on the ground level. And whether you talk about neighborhoods and the safety they want to feel, the housing crisis that so many of our residents experience, the work being done by community development and housing cannot be overstated. And we think it's important that now, more than ever, that we continue to lean in and continue to support that work. So, thank y'all so much. Our next proclamation is for Parkinson's Awareness Month, and the young lady who requested us to read this, she intended to be here but couldn't make it, so we'll read it in honor of the occasion. Whereas, Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease, and is the second-most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States, with 90,000 new people diagnosed each year in the United States, and an estimated 36,400 people living with Parkinson's disease in the Carolinas. And whereas, Parkinson's disease is estimated to affect approximately 1 million people in the United States, and the prevalence will rise to 1.2 million by 2030. And it is estimated that the economic burden of the disease is at least $52 billion annually in the United States. And whereas, complications related to Parkinson's disease is the 14th-leading cause of death in the United States, and it has been found that the combination of medication, education, and nutrition can slow the progress of Parkinson's symptoms. And whereas, research suggests the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown. There is no objective test for Parkinson's disease nor a cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. And whereas, the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And whereas, volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life a person's living with Parkinson's disease and their families. And whereas, increased research, education, and community support services, such as those provided by the Parkinson's Foundation and other organizations, are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Therefore, be it resolved, that I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of High Point, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 2025 to be Parkinson's Awareness Month in the City of High Point and encourage all residents to help raise awareness of Parkinson's disease and lend support to organizations like the Parkinson's Foundation and those affected by the disease. We appreciate the group who sent this in, and we'll make sure to get it to them. And our final proclamation, I'm going to invite up my good friend Stephanie, I'm the Executive Director of the Arc of High Point, along with Melody Burnett, President of Visit High Point, and is it Arnandra or Arnandra Maiden? Arnandra Maiden of the Arc of High Point as well. If y'all will come on up, we're going to read this proclamation. How are you doing, Stephanie? Good to see you. How are you doing now? Good to see you. Arnandra, pleasure to meet you. All right, here. Y'all come on over here. Whereas, April is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, starting with World Autism Awareness Day on April 2nd, a time to focus on understanding, acceptance, and support for individuals with autism. And whereas, autism spectrum disorder, otherwise known as ASD, affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities. And whereas, individuals with ASD possess unique talents, perspectives, and contributions to society. And whereas, understanding and acceptance of neurodiversity are essential for creating inclusive communities. And whereas, April is recognized as Autism Acceptance Month, a time to raise awareness, promote understanding, and celebrate the unique strengths of individuals with autism. And whereas, in 2023, the City of High Point earned its designation from the International Board of Credentialing and Continued Education Standards as the first certified autism destination on the East Coast and the second in the entire country. Today, High Point has 20 certified autism centers, all committed to providing an inclusive and welcoming experience for people on the spectrum. And whereas, the City of High Point Incorporated, "High Point is Kind and Inclusive," as one of their brand principles, supporting the Certified Autism Destination designation. Now therefore, be it resolved, that I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month in the City of High Point, encouraging all residents to learn about autism and its spectrum, promote understanding and acceptance with individuals with ASD, support families and organizations that serve individuals with autism, and create inclusive environments that allow everyone to thrive. Can we please celebrate this incredible occasion? First item, first action item on our agenda is our consent agenda, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Holmes, seconded by Councilmember Andrew. In discussion on the motion to approve our consent agenda, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and our consent agenda is approved. For our general agenda, item 2025-141, consideration of a resolution of intent, annexation 25-01, we're requested to consider a resolution of intent to establish a public hearing day of May 19th, 2025, to consider a voluntary contiguous annexation petition. With that, I'll invite up Mr. Herb Shannon. Okay. Only if there are questions from council on this item, we'll invite up staff to talk about it. Looks like we're setting a hearing date here. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion's recognized, Councilmember Andrew, and seconded by Councilmember Cook. In discussion on the motion to approve this item, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we have a hearing date. Next item is item 2025-133, public hearing regarding an ordinance to demolish a dwelling at 3213 East Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Council's requested to conduct this public hearing, adopt an ordinance to demolish the dwelling, and authorize the appropriate city officials to execute all necessary documents. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite up Ms. Kaylee Parish, our interim Code Enforcement Manager, to speak about this item.
Good evening. The following evidence I'm going to present is just supporting the adoption of the ordinance to demolish the dwelling. So, the complaint and notice of hearing was issued on December 12th, 2023. The hearing was held on December 22nd, 2023, providing an opportunity for the owner or parties of interest to address the concerns raised in the complaint. No one appeared for the hearing. Following the hearing and based on the evidence presented, an order to repair demolish was issued on December 22nd, 2023, with a compliance due date of January 22nd, 2024. To date, no repairs have been completed, nor have any permits been obtained to initiate either the repair or the demolish of the dwelling.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor, looking at the pictures, I struggle to see how there would be any repair possible.
That is correct. I will say that some property owners or investment companies come in and buy these properties, and they can fix them up if they have enough determination.
Did we have anyone, apparently not, show interest in property?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the dais for staff at this time? Thank you, Ms. Parish.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this item? Not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion to approve the demolition of this dwelling.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Motion's recognized, the Councilmember Cook, seconded, Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is item 2025-142, public hearing regarding project insulation. Council's requested to consider requests from project insulation to authorize performance-based incentives for a manufacturing project at 772 Gallimore Dairy Road in the amount of $71,027 over a five-year period. We'll conduct a public hearing and authorize appropriate city officials to execute all necessary documents. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite Mr. Peter Bishop, our Economic Development Director and applicant, to speak on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam Manager. Good evening. It's good to see you here. We are here, where's my presentation? Oh, just get the presentation up for you. We're here to talk about project insulation today. Project insulation represents Opsun Systems, Inc. Opsun Systems, Inc. is a Canadian manufacturer specializing in bifacial photovoltaic racking structures, so essentially the undergirding of solar panels and their attachment systems onto roofs, ground, sides of buildings, et cetera. They design, manufacture, and work with installers of this equipment for commercial and residential and mixed-use customers. The project involves a significant investment of machinery and equipment at 772 Gallimore Dairy Road, where Pella Windows is operating in a portion of the building. The company is proposing to invest $17 million over a five-year period in the City of High Point. This project will also create 32 new jobs to the City of High Point with an average annual wage of just over $60,000, which is higher than the Guilford County average wage. Our staff is proposing and recommending to City Council an incentive offer of $71,127 over five years. Just last Thursday, the Guilford County Board of Commissioners approved a similar grant to Opsun Systems, Inc., and earlier last week, the State of North Carolina Department of Commerce announced a one North Carolina grant in the amount of $40,000. Both the Guilford County incentive amount and the City of High Point incentive amount serve as matches to that state grant award. So, the total state and local incentives would be over, just over $182,000 over five years to Opsun Systems, Inc. Briefly, the utilities are served by the City of High Point for water and sewer, and Duke Power provides the electrical service to this location on Gallimore Dairy Road. Our decision timeline is immediate. We are in competition with the metro Atlanta and Richmond areas for this project. All the other public agencies have made their determinations to this point, so it is at the purview of the High Point City Council to also approve this incentive. Just briefly, a photo, I'm not moving along on the slides here, so, a photo of the location where they will going, they'll be going there at 772 Gallimore Dairy Road, just around the corner from another Canadian company, Superior Glove, that is in town this week as well. With that, we have members of the Opsun team, company president Francois Gil Gagnon's here with several of his team members. Francois's going to make a brief presentation about the company to you, and then we'll have some questions at the very end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me and my team here tonight. I'm very excited, a bit nervous. My first city council in my life. So, Opsun started as an idea. So, the idea was, we wanted to optimize the energy generation of the solar panel, increase the efficiency of the solar panel you buy. the efficiency of the solar panel you buy, and generate more energy out of it to reduce the overall cost and make it competitive to the solar market. This was back then when the PV panels were super expensive. Now, today, we are one of the lowest energy source in USA. So, it was founded in 2004, and I bought the company back in 2012. So, we had the idea to adapt our system that was designed first for snow area, so we transform it to make it compatible for bifacial technology. And still even today, we are one of the only bifacial rack, bifacial optimized rack out there on the market. In 2022, we established Opsun Corporation in the Delaware State to prepare our floor or the ground to make our move today in the City of High Point. So, what do we do exactly? So, the structure we design is very adaptable. So, it's a standard Lego style that can be configured in many configurations to optimize energy generation, but now mostly to adapt to any type of roof system. So, by adapting to the roof system, we can increase the roof conversion to solar from 20% with, from our competition to up to 80%. So, that makes most of our customers, which have a large portfolio of pipeline, like Walmart, they can do like 60% more project out of their portfolio. So, it's all made of aluminum. It won't rust. It's very durable. It's a very high-quality product. So, one of our key services is the preassembly installation that is done at the factory. With that services, we can reduce installation time up to 30% less on the roof. So, we know these days, the soil contractor, they have a problem with labor, so they can install a lot more project that way. And finally, we are still the only bifacial rack on the market after 10 years, surprisingly. The competition was not even, is not even close to achieve what we do. So, our market is 85% in USA right now, 30% in Canada. We do some project in the Caribbean because of our high-quality structure that can resist the salty area. And in Europe, they buy, we have done many sales in different countries because our unique bifacial rack, which is not available over there. But we never did any marketing or sales over there. So, our bread and butter is mostly large commercial rooftop. So, we, large industrial building, white roof, we all, this is what we like to do and what make us having a large factory. So, we also do many different type of product, and we really, really like to do custom projects, which are very architectural. So, when people are, an architect design a special building and want to integrate solar to it, we are also a good point to go. Why High Point? First, because the city is very welcoming. And not, North Carolina was very surprised, helpful the people were here. So, I can tell you, I have not only these two states that was mentioned previously, but I have many, many states that want our, want us to establish over there. So, even after the announcement by North Carolina State, they continue to push and push. And so, yeah, so the City of High Point is a pool of every skills workforce for us. The state is very pro-renewable energy, so that helps us and feel welcome too. So, yeah, the North Carolina State and all the city around, it's all linked together, and it's very supportive for the business. There's many criteria that, like the sales tax, and especially the synergy between the city, the county, and the state. It's very good. And also, one of the main spots, it's a central logistic hub for us. We have many supplier out in different state, and we have, our East Coast market is one of our main market, Illinois, and our supplier are more south right now. We'll add soon more manufacturing locally. And, but, yeah. So, we bring our solar expertise, not only for High Point, but for all the states. So, with all our skills, we'll help improve and convert more roof to solar in North Carolina and through the United States. We'll bring quality job, and we'll procure as much material locally, since I'm a, I'm pretty local believer myself, so I like to encourage the community. This is all I'm built, so.
Question? Thank you, Mr. Francois. Are there any questions for the applicant or for staff at this time?
Quite clever, this idea of yours. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I was intrigued by your comments. You mentioned it being the only bifacial.
Yeah.
Item out there in the market set up in such a way. I think that's really interesting. And reducing the amount of time that contractors spend up on the roof by 30%. Obviously, with that being just a natural safety hazard, being a known reduce, I think it's really awesome too. So, glad to hear that. And excited that the High Point's being considered. Are there any other questions or comments or anything? Peter, does your team have any additional?
One last comment, the broker representing the property, Ms. Kelly Rich with Linville Team Partners, is also here supporting the project, so just wanted to shout out her presence.
Okay. Awesome.
Yeah, just wanted to say, it's a really great development. We're seeing synergy in the state when it comes to work, when it comes to development, economic development around clean energy and renewable energy, which you would think in the South here that wouldn't be the case, but North Carolina is really stepping forward as a place where renewable energy and clean energy adjacent workforce is happening. So, really, really pleased to see it, and welcome to Ward 6.
Nice. Okay. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Okay. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion re-recognized, Councilmember Holmes, seconded, Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion on the motion to approve this item?
I just want to say, I hope this is going to propel us more even forward as, at a city level for adopting clean energy policy. This is something that I was really passionate about at our retreat in November, and I feel like other people jumped on board, thanks to Councilman Peters and her input about how economic development is tied to clean energy, and this is a perfect example. So, thank you, and we're glad to have you.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is item 2025-137, Consideration of an Appointment to Citizens Advisory Council. Council is requested to confirm the appointment of Philip Middlebrooks to the Citizens Advisory Council, term effective June 1st of this year, expiring May 31, 2027. Any discussion on this item? Any questions for staff? If not, then I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds. Recognized, Councilmember Andrew, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. We look forward to welcoming Mr. Middlebrooks to the Citizens Advisory Council. Our last item is item 2025-145, it's closed session, attorney-client privilege. Before we go into closed session, are there any announcements from the dais?
Well, I just wanted to thank, I've already started to receive letters from the second graders at Union Hill Elementary. I was able to attend their career day and present to three of their second grade classes, and I gave them a stamped letter with my address and told them that if they sent me a letter, I would send them something back. And three were in my box today. So, shout out to the amazing staff and students at Union Hill for inviting me, and I think also the police department was there that day. So, City of High Point showed up strong, and it was a really great time.
Any other announcements from the dais? I'll note that this week, we start the furniture market, as most folks know it, a market for home furnishings, which is a very busy and exciting time here in our city. Many of our residents and many businesses will be busy with a number of interactions and so forth, and we're always wishing for a very successful market. There will be more traffic, and that's okay. You can feel free to take one of the arteries around the city if you don't like traffic on Main Street. But we look forward to welcoming visitors and being as hospitable as we can during this time. We also want to say a big thank you to all of our staff, who I know have been coordinating with Market Authority and so many others throughout this time. If you see the tumbleweeds go across the street, those aren't tumbleweeds, those are just foam, little foam pieces and cardboard. So, we appreciate all the work done by public services, transportation, there's probably a number of other departments who are heavily involved in doing it. So, our thanks to staff for that work. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made by Michael Holmes, second goes to Councilmember Peters. Any discussion on the motion to go into closed session? We'll convene the closed session over in the fishbowl, y'all. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we are in closed session.